So that you can see their salad.
Okay. You know what, if that's our biggest problem, we are good.
I'll go in there and cook the chicken.
You know, I didn't have.
It smells minty over it.
Better than what's smelled before.
It's lovely.
But you got Alex to let you know what he needs or not.
I feel powerful. I hope when it comes to speed, like exercise.
Oh, don't, don't do that. Don't do that.
I was gonna say, if you want, I can just get up. Just call the meeting to order. Anything I'd like to call this meeting to order? Can you hear me? All right. When you're ready, we'll roll call. Here.
Dr. Genovasi.
Here.
Dr. Liliston.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Peters.
Here.
Dr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Suicki.
Here.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
You have a quorum?
All right, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 3rd, 2023. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Files. The Board reserves the right to enter inter-executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping. At this time, please stand for the flex switch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we need a motion? We need a resolution to approve minutes of the June 20th, 2023 regular meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? Upstaying? All right. Motion carries. All right. So on to the report of the Board President. Well, she's not here today, so my name is Andrea Driver and I'm the Vice President here, standing in for her. I don't have much to say, but I would like to see if Dr. Treese would like to say a few words.
I just want to say just a few words. Our teachers have been enjoying some nice recovery time and restorative time for the summer. But we did have a number of staff members that worked over the summer to support our students in our extended school year program that just finished up, as well as our kindergarten camp, getting our new kindergarteners, incoming kindergarteners acclimated for the new school year. We have a number of our facilities under various states of construction. Our turf field is coming along nicely, so Mr. Becker, our Athletic Director, is taking pictures and film along the way and is working very closely to make sure that they finish the project on time. It looks like it's supposed to be finished this week. It's going to be one of the first projects to be finished. But we will share a time-lapse film with the community so that you can see what the process looked like, and it really is a beautiful field. The material is amazing. I just, this is going to be a much safer, safer material for our students to play on.
It's going very well because he's following them every day.
Every day. He's stalking them, so this one will get done on time. He's not fooling around. So it does, it's beautiful work. Timber Lane is coming along. There's a nice trench that I can stand in up to my head in the middle of the eighth grade hallway, and we are just waiting right now for the inspector to come in so we can continue the process. But the work is coming along swimmingly and that nice smell that your poor kids had to suffer at the end of the year is gone.
It's actually quite interesting how they're doing it. We shared it at Finance Facilities, but they actually got a small bulldozer into the hallway at Timber Lane, and that's how they're doing it.
Now, did we get video footage of all of that?
We have, Tom, not video, I think Tom Quinn has some pictures that, we'll put all this in a slideshow that we'll show in August when everything's done, before and afters.
And that's really all the updates I have for now. We'll have more next month, so we look forward to continuing to get us all set up for the school year.
All right, thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the Board in any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the Superintendent to do so. The Board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the District Administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping. Public session, public comment is now open. Seeing no one, we will close public comment for this time and move on to school board candidate information.
Just putting out there, this is the last of our notifications or that the petitions for the three open seats, the three Hopewell Township seats in the one-year term in Hopewell Township are due four o'clock on Monday, the 31st. So if you're still looking to run, you still have a few days to get your petition in.
Do you have any packets still here?
We still have some packets, I believe.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Yep.
Do we need to take a?
Need a motion?
We need a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Any questions about the items on the consent agenda? Those that are marked with an asterisk. Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. All right, so I think we'll move on to Finance and Facilities. We'll move on to Committee. You ready?
The only thing I have to be ready for is just to let everyone know that I am, that we now have Alex serving as the Chairman of Finance and Facilities. If anything, this is something we had discussed at the beginning of the year. It's a good time to do a transition with the new fiscal year, and Alex has demonstrated himself very capable, so please take it away, Alex.
All right, thank you. So now I get to deliver the report?
Yes, please.
I think that's thanks on. All right, so we actually discussed quite a few things on the, in the Finance and Facility Committee meeting, so one thing Bob went through is that this is a weird month. If you are going to go through or have gone through in detail through the various things on there, there are some bills that are against last year's budget. There are some bills that are against New Year's budget, right? How these are paid really depends essentially on when the goods and services are booked. So just keep that in mind. There was really no major discussion on the items at, on the consent agenda, but we did discuss a couple of additional items. One is we are over budget for the health benefits for the 2022, 2023 year. Bob is estimating about a million and a half. He doesn't know yet what the exact amount is, that's gonna have to wait for everything to come in, be added, subtracted, divided. So Bob was expecting to have an exact number for us in August. And also a plan for how to cover it, and I don't know, Bob, if you want to go into the details of where your thoughts are or just?
I mean, we, our health, our self-insured health benefit count has a reserve that we set aside for these kinds of, I'm not even going to call it an emergency, it's just it's, it's an outlier year. We've done well for the past three. With everything going on in this current fiscal year, we, our expenses exceeded what we, what we budgeted. So we're covered with our reserve, and we're hoping that we're going to do better in 23, 24. This doesn't exhaust our reserve. We're still in a good, in a good place. So we'll, we'll take this one on the chin and we're going to move forward next year. We did do, the Board did take it under our advisement. We did budget some more money towards health benefits this year to account for that. So I'm hoping that we're going to be in a better place in 23, 24. But, you know, our planning, everything we did to plan is paying off, so I'm happy, I'm happy for that.
Then we discussed the facility rental rates. The costs are increasing. There's inflation, so this seems to be the right time to look at the facility rental rates and raise them. There's a bit of a procedural snag in that the rates are documented in the policy. So we were going to ask the Policy Committee to, to take a look at that policy and see if they can revise it to allow the Board to simply set the rates so that, you know, this time we still, we have to go through two committees one way or another, but if all we're doing is changing the rates, we ought to be able to discuss it in the Finance Facilities Committee, bring it to the Board for approval, I'd see a reason for the policy.
As opposed to go through Finance and Policy and two readings.
Two readings on both. Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Because it would be a policy.
And just to add a little to that, we're not looking, we're not looking at the increase in rates to make money per se. We're not, we're into not to lose money. Right now, due to the Saturday and Sunday rates that our, our staff makes, we're not able to cover those with the current rates. So we're looking more towards weekend rates on our indoor rentals where our staff members are required, or outside turf rentals, or not turf, not the turf, but fields. We may not touch those because there's, you know, folks show up, they have their practice, and they move along.
And that's consistent with the philosophy that the Board established. You know, when we first published the rates many years ago, right? Making them, you know, it's a resource to the community, want to be fair with that, but we also don't want the District's budget to be subsidized.
Let me skip the next one in my notes and leave it for the end. Update on the summer work. So the good news, turf field, awesome. TMS sewer pipe replacement, awesome. Hopewell Elementary boiler replacement, the plumbing work is going well. But one of the two units arrived damaged, so it needs to be replaced by the vendor. And apparently these are not Home Depot stock items, so.
Gosh.
That, that's gonna take a while. Tom said that because there's still plumbing work to be done, they're gonna press the vendor to actually have it available once the plumbing work is done so that we can get it installed in time for the school year to start, but that might be a potential issue.
We're not actually concerned about the ticket for when the school year starts. We're concerned about.
Right, right. It's when you need, yes.
So we got, we're three months.
Sorry, I was.
Be an obstacle, like the construction be an obstacle for schools?
No, because they're in a, they're in a boiler room, away from students. The plumbing work is going to be ready and ready to go. We do have one boiler that if the other boiler was delayed, you have that one boiler that'll help run the school. It's when, you need the second one when it's really cold.
Yeah, if anything, you know, the fact that we have the existing environmental units in the classrooms, you know, that gets you through the early part, you know, the part of it getting cool. It's really when you get to the cold weather, the boiler fire oven, when it's 10 degrees out.
Yeah, so we have a bit of time, but. Yeah, that, that's something to monitor.
And then last. Three months? It's, there's, I mean, there's supply chain issues with all this stuff. We're hoping that they're going to be able, the time we had heard originally, and this violates the first rule of construction work, but giving an estimate without having complete knowledge, but Tom thinks six to eight weeks that they'll have a new one.
From now or six to eight weeks?
From when we first started. But it came, it arrived in a damage. It was damaged and we don't want them to repair it.
Yeah, and, and Tom showed the pictures of the damage. That's not the kind of stuff that you would want to repair. And then last but not least, GP visited Bear Tavern and found that we were in non-compliance for non-potable water. So the potable, the drinking water is fine because there is an additional filtration system there, but the non-potable water is non-compliant. Tom thinks it's related to the chlorination system. So that just happened when we met, so he was investigating, and we'll hopefully get, have a report or a resolution for the Board next meeting.
The key thing to note there is the potable water is fine.
So last and definitely not least, we were looking at the capital expenditures that are coming up in the next couple of years, especially in light of the anticipated demographic changes around the Bear Tavern area. This is the time for us to start discussing a potential ways and means to address what will be a significant expense because we talked about the timelines. Should we decide to go to a referendum when we're going to need the money and, and how long it takes to get there? So this is something that we're going to be discussing, and I assume that Bob's going to figure out how we start, but those discussions are coming.
And yes, and as we start that conversation, having the Township be a part of that conversation, because as, as you all remember, when we talked about this early on before we collaborated to have the Demographer do the study, there was some talk initially of support from the Township in this work. So yes, we need to talk about and explore if, is this going to need a referendum? And also what, what the Township's contribution may be. We've had these discussions, and there's been some change in, in leadership. They are open to the discussion again, but in there are a number of other things that need to be repaired. So if we're going down that road, we definitely want to talk about some other issues that, you know, we should make sure make part of that as well and just do it right.
Again, as we've said before, and we've discussed it with the Board and in public and with the Finance Committee meeting, a lot of the projects that we are looking to address are projects that we removed from the referendum we did back in 16. They weren't going to go away. We knew where they weren't going to go away, and we've been trying to chip away as much as we can, year by year, and delaying things as much as we can. But we're going to have to, we're going to come up against the wall. We've talked about, we've made deposits to the Capital Reserve over the last several years, significant deposits. But with the year we have this year, I don't know that we're going to be able to make any deposit, and if we do make a deposit, it's going to be meager. It's not going, I don't believe we're going to have that same amount of money.
And in any case, even if we were making deposits right, that wouldn't allow us to address the issue at Bear Tavern.
No, no. Well, we'd have to.
So we need to have a discussion one way or another.
Correct.
I mean, beyond that, we've discussed in Finance and Facilities and brought it to the Board. We have several multimillion-dollar projects outlined, regardless of whether you're talking about anything related to demographics, right? We have other things that need to get done, so if anything, you know, having less flow into the Capital Reserve is going to impact our overall ability on that too, so.
And there are advantages, like we've talked about it before, you know, and we'll talk about it again, but there are advantages to going to referendum as, as the state will cover up to 40% of the cost, so it, for eligible projects. So it, that's, you know, it helps save money to the taxpayers to do it that way as well, but more to come on that.
And that's it for the Finance and Facilities?
The exception of your one agenda item that's not on consent.
Yes, that is true. Okay, so I'm gonna need a motion on Agenda Item 14, which is an acceptance of donation. It's an anonymous donation of a next building set, a tinker toy set, and a tempera paints and a scale for a total value of $100.
Motion.
And that's it? Then we need a, we all in favor? So we need an all. Anyone who's, all that's in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposition? Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Adam, for helping make that decision. You trained him well. Thank you. All right, so on to the Personnel Committee, which is my committee. So on the agenda today, you will see a number of resignations and appointments. You will see some from the kindergarten camp paraprofessionals, some ESY pares, and some substitutes. There's also some ECA, some extracurricular activities, a few more coaches. There's one salary correction, a kindergarten camp teacher, and some curriculum writing. We do have a few open positions as of right now that we hope to fill before the school year begins. We have, we're looking for a counselor at the high school, two desktop specialists, a CSO at Tollgate, and a few leave of absence positions are still open. You will also see the link for the non-rep waiver of benefits, those that opt out. And, and there's, and that's it. Okay. That's, that was a quick meeting. Any questions? Okay, we need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in?
This is a roll call.
Okay, we need a roll call.
Personnel's always a roll call. Dr. Genovasi.
Yes.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Suicki.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving along to the education program. That's also my committee. However, we did not meet this month. We will reconvene in August. So we will move on to. All right, communications.
That's me. So we did meet this month, and we talked about the climate. Sorry. The climate survey. There were some glitches to begin with, but we got that fixed, and we extended the time that the survey was open so that we could get people to fill that out and get some good results. We talked about sending out a separate survey around communications in September because that. With the? Yep. So in order for us to get that information, because communications is such an important subject, we're going to send out an additional tiny little survey just around communications once the school year picks back up. We also talked about having a small working group around the climate survey to take a look at the questions, what we're asking, what our goals are, since it's been a couple of years since we've done that, just to make sure the survey is doing what we want it to do and see what kind of results. So we're lucky enough to have some expertise on the Board around survey construction. We also talked about Hopewell Express. We had the June edition go out with all of the great successes of the graduation and the year. And just to let people know that that goes out in October, December, March, and June each year, so if people want an update, they can look at that. We also talked about the instructional coach training for STEM, for lead teachers that's happening. And talked about continuing the coffee and chats with the Superintendent next year because they were very well received this year. And so that's everything from Communications.
Please, if I need the mic here. Two questions about the climate survey. I think, one, I think this is easy. When will the results be available for the Board to review? And then the second question is, have we experimented with the timing of the climate survey at all? I noticed that it went out like right towards the end of the school year, and I wonder if we might get a higher response rate if it was like maybe a little bit earlier this year. I understand why we want it towards the end, but maybe if we moved it up in the spring? Yeah, before people are like in the chaos of, of sort of the, you know, end of the school year shuffle.
So one, we can always move it up. That's not a problem. The second thing is you should have that by, you'll have it before August, but then everyone else will have it then too. Right now, I'm trying to work through getting it, because folks wanted like school, a report for each school. So I'm trying to disaggregate the data by school, and Survey Monkey's not being easy with that, but I've just completed getting through the elementary schools. So now I'm trying to get the middle and high school together so that you can see the trends, the, the overall charts of how people responded to things. But then I also want those individual reports, so each one of those I have to download separately. And then I already have the big one, so you'll have that in the green notes, the big one this week. And then I'll start getting it in a way and packaging it for the public to be able to read in a clearer way than they have in the past.
One suggestion in that regard, you know, I think we've traditionally been pretty good in terms of presenting the data. I would say we've been very thorough in making sure that every comment becomes available to somebody who wants to see it. As a Board member, I would say it might be helpful if the administration looked at the comments and if you could like hit the top 10 things that people commented on. That might make it a little bit more actionable for us.
That's what I'm trying to package it now, especially, you know, when there seems to be disconnects. They need, all of those are important. But if we can look at trends, that's going to help us set goals moving forward a lot easier than trying to digest all of it. Now, all of it will be published, and you'll be able to see it online as in the past, but I think that that's the better way to approach it. I agree.
Yeah, have it all accessible, but, you know, if we could have a more digestible set of actions.
So thank you. All right, SEL Committee, is that also you, Jackie?
That's also me. So we had our July meeting where we discussed really all the fantastic work that the SEL Committees at the different schools did all year long, and I just wanted to emphasize the hard work that all of the staff and the administration has done around SEL, and that should be acknowledged. We also talked about how next year, Character Strong will be a full year of implementation throughout the District. So they piloted this year, and next year it's got its full implementation. Mike Wilson is going to work with Trish Riley and Beth Hoffman to create basically a data collection process just to make sure that as we roll out Character Strong, that we're assessing, you know, what our goals are with that and what is happening with the student, students. We're also next year planning to have parent caregiver informal sessions, most likely quarterly with the Rutgers Clinician. Just, they were also something that we did last year that was very well received. We are continuing with our nurtured heart training. So we will have parent cohort training in October through March of next year, and that'll be in person. And then we're also going to have a nurtured heart sort of reboot, you know, for parents who have already attended previous trainings, they can update their training in nurtured heart, which will be about three to four sessions, either in morning or evening for parents that would like to do that. And then we had a conversation around different policies that sometimes come up that sort of overlap with the S E L mission, and talking about basically how can we get the two committees to collaborate before they come to the board to discuss issues that overlap. And not only with S E L, it's sort of turned into a broader conversation if there's something in the education committee where a policy might overlap. So Pam just brought to our attention like that would be a good idea to, you know, talk through policies as they pertain to the different subcommittees. And then Dr. Treese talked about an S E L consultant, Martin Blank, who does work in building resilience in adults. And so there was a retreat and coaching that is happening with that. And I don't know, Dr. Treese, if you wanted to expand on that at all?
I've been doing a lot of work with my leadership team around conscious leadership, and this is another step in that piece, you know, being able to, to get these resiliency tools that you can use now with your staff, and hopefully they can then use with, with the students. And I think that this is, this is a very important time to do that. We've all been through a lot of trauma since COVID and all of the upheaval that that caused. So it's, it's now an opportunity as we reorganize, really, really strengthening the resilience in our staff and our students, especially since we're seeing a lot more use of, of our resources around that for students and staff. Just really just trying to equip folks with, with more tools. So I'm looking forward to that, and hopefully we'll be able to share some of that work with you and maybe even take you through some exercises in the future.
Awesome. And that's it.
Thank you so very much. And we're moving on to policy and government. Are you still doing that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so can I have a motion to move the policies and regulations up for first reading, please?
Second.
Okay, so we have, like, this month, we only have items up for first reading, so people might think, oh, we took the early summer break last month. That wasn't the case at all. It's just we were working on some very challenging policies and regulations, and it took a lot of discussion between administration, board members, et cetera, to get, get to the point where we're bringing these forward. Basically, there's four. I'll kind of step through them. The simple ones, let's see. We have policy fifty-five thirty-three, which covers student use of tobacco and nicotine. That one, we don't have what I'd call exceptionally significant changes to, they wind up mainly being clarifications. Part of it, part of the reason for that is because we address the outcomes of this in separate regulation. So that one's relatively small, it's making it consistent. The next one we have is, a simple one, is policy fifty-five thirty-five, passive breath alcohol sensor device. What this one is related to, you may remember several years ago, we put into policy the ability when we have events to do screening to make sure students aren't under the influence heading into the events. The main thing we're adding here is allowing the administration to use these devices as well to determine whether a student is, something that a student is in possession of contains alcohol. We've had some instances there, so it's, it's being able to use that device. Now, the thing is, it's not, we're not doing random screenings or anything like that. This is only if the administration has cause to believe a student potentially has something of that nature in their possession. Okay, the third one starts to get a little bit more complex now is policy. I'm sorry, it's actually regulation fifty-five thirty for substance abuse. Okay, so there's a number of things we wound up revising within here. Some of it related to the potential penalties that the administration has the option, the option to impose. One thing we wound up doing is actually reducing some of the durations for in-school suspensions, attendance at after-school events. As I mentioned, we had a lot of feedback from administrators, especially at high school and Timberland Middle School. And what they found is basically, you know, they have, they've always had discretion to, to impose the penalties. They found that some of the more excessive times wound up being detrimental to what they were trying to accomplish. So we actually wound up, you know, reducing some of the calendar dates that are listed there. Another thing we did is, we put in as a potential option, as a potential remedial or penalty, is potentially completion of a district-approved educational program relating to substance abuse. That, that could be an option in terms of helping the students, considered to be more, more proactive, right? So I think, you know, that's the majority of the changes that we have there, the rest are mainly wording. I apologize, there's a, there's some others there. We put in some additional guidance with regard to what occurs if a student is, is potentially considered to be under influence. For example, one thing we added is potential review by the school nurse for an examination of the student, to see whether there are any immediate health needs. We didn't have that in the policy before, and that could potentially be beneficial. So we rounded up adding that. We put in some specific things related to, as I mentioned, the passive breath device or saliva strips as a means of, if there's a suspicion the student's under the influence, that is a means of, you know, doing the next step to determine whether or not they truly are.
And those things would be, those things would be administered at, at that moment at school?
Right now, sending them out is not a big old test for that. So like we have to have a system in place, and this is, you know, something that's commonly used, but it's not in our policy. Also, that's being proposed, as well as transporting students or, or to the hospital.
Correct. Sorry, it's a bit long, so.
It is a long one.
Oh, one very other important thing. We added the option to be, with the intent of being less invasive, we put in the option that if a student is suspected of, and potentially needs to be searched for having something, the potential use for a metal detecting wand or similar non-invasive devices, rather than forcing the student to. Into the pockets and things like that, padding down, things like that. So if, if anything, it seemed like a good option in those situations. So we added that in there.
We also added a piece about kids bringing their own specimens.
Uh, I, in this one, I wasn't sure. I thought that was in.
It's in the regulation.
It's in the, it's, it's in the code of conduct.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, so that's the main stuff there. So yeah, that's the short one, and the longer one is actually the code of conduct.
So do you want questions now on this one?
Yeah, why don't we go on? Yeah.
Okay, I'll go first. So the one thing that you didn't touch on, and I want to address it, is you've removed a random testing as a consequence of the first offense, right? And I want to put it in those very specific, right? This is not a question of just random.
No, this isn't, yes.
Right, this is, and, and I wanted to ask about the justification for removing it in that particular context when you already know that somebody has violated this policy.
What, do you want to share?
No.
One of the things that the principal, and again, we have both principals in the vice, you know, work on this together, is just really, it's been very difficult to reinforce, especially with the numbers that we've had, and we haven't actually seen that this has been a decrease in a child's use of, of abuse of the drug. We haven't seen these results in the random drug testing overall, but specifically in the repeat offenders. This hasn't been a deterrent to keep them from using again. And so at the expense to the district and the time and all of this, and it's not really reducing the behavior, they suggested that there might be other options that we should include, which was one of the things, which is including maybe a program outside and making sure that that's part of the consequence, instead of.
So what you're saying is, we have actual data.
Yes.
For known offenders.
Yes.
Random.
And when they're, right, and when they're randomly tested under this scenario, right? You've been, not, you were randomly tested in the op end because you're in a club, and you just got called down. You are a part of this random, you know, retesting, you come up that you have been using again, you're suspended again, so then now the kid is out of school and probably using again. So if they have a problem, it's just creating this cycle. So that was the recommendation, and again, this is open to the board for discussion, and this is the first read, and I know there were some other concerns that also came up, but that was the rationale around that.
So you're saying it's, you're getting rid of the ran, for repeat offenders?
Right.
Like, you're getting rid of the random testing? Is that what you're saying?
That's what they're proposing for this policy, for, for that. Once they violated that, we're gonna randomly test.
Anything else on this one?
Yeah, just a quick question on fifty-five thirty-five on the passive breath alcohol sensor device. Is that what they're called now? Not a breathalyzer, is this what the new word is? Okay, so.
The general term.
Got it, okay. Kleenex, passive breath alcohol.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just curious, I'm just trying to figure this out. At what point? Large paragraph on the second page. The adult student and/or the student's parent, legal guardian must consent to the screening. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. If the parent is notified, if the parent says no, but the student says yes, the student can still be screened, and vice versa?
Does it say adult? I don't know where you're.
Adult child. That would have to be a, that'd have to be eighteen or older.
Okay.
Right.
So yeah, so no matter, okay, that's wrong. So, okay, so no matter what, parent has to consent under eighteen for that.
Right.
Yes.
And if the parent says no, the kid can't say yes, if they're under eighteen. That's an adult child.
Okay, perfect.
When it's legally adult.
I was gonna ask that same question, I helped us too. Let me just make sure I'm understanding anything. Think I'm okay right now? I'm all set.
Do you all need us to revisit the random drug test case?
No, if it's based on a recommendation of the principal, and they have data that shows that's actually not effective, then I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable too. I would love to just see the data for the heck of it, candidly.
I kind of would like.
Yeah, I would like to see the data around it.
I don't know, you were gonna do one more thing?
Okay, so the last one we're gonna talk about, and it's the longest one, it was certainly the one we spent most time on, was, let's see. Policy R fifty-six hundred for student discipline code of conduct. So basically, this covers, it provides a consistent set of disciplinary policies, code of conduct at, again, the high school and the middle school. So it doesn't strictly apply to elementary, right? So clear for making that clear? So again, this, this is a revision of the existing district policy. I'll focus on what's changed. So one thing I'll make a very good comment on, thanks to Dr. Wilson for a suggestion to include things we're doing proactively to help promote good conduct and, you know, positive outcome. So basically, listing out what the district does in terms of preventative social emotional learning, the castle standard. So thanks for making the suggestion, Mike. Appreciate it. Let's, so let's keep going now. I'll try to hit the highlights, there's a lot. You know, we, we tried to be more thorough in terms of consistency of procedures when you might potentially need to do a grade adjustment. We wound up adding in, one thing we, we've had an issue with is, with this cutting class when an assessment or an assignment is due. So we.
You don't say.
So, so, yeah, so we, we clarified that that is a potential reason for grade adjustment, basically trying to encourage good behavior, you know, take the assessments, don't try to pass them. Let's see. One thing we did related to academic dishonesty is have a conversation, given it was very topical, about use of Chat G P T and artificial intelligence systems. So, you know, we actually had a good, good discussion about that in terms of appropriateness. I think the administration is taking the right tack with it in terms of it's here, it's gonna be used, right? We need to teach our students how to use it correctly, but we also need to make sure that we have procedures in place to assess when it's being used incorrectly. So, so we had a very good discussion about that. And then the main thing you wind up seeing changed here, and it's quite lengthy, is the chart of discipline. Basically, it's outlining for different infractions, what is the essentially recommended standard penalty, so to speak, for, you know, a first offense, a second offense, third offense. So it covers all sorts of things, academic dishonesty, assault, cutting class, the dress code, drug and alcohol policy violations, proper use of electronic devices. This is one we actually had quite a lengthy discussion about in terms of what winds up being the best procedures, right? Just as an illustration, what we wound up putting in based upon the recommendations of our two, it actually was three principles now.
Yes.
Now, was for the, you know, for the first defense, the confiscation and return to the student at the end of the school day. For the second, where the parent or guardian must now pick up the device, and, and then similar type of thing in, in terms of the third, third offense.
And that long detention.
Yes, yes. So, so clarifying, you know, those cases.
So that's, that's.
And again, these are things that, you know, are pervasive in use, you know, our students use these during the course of the school day, but there's proper use and improper use, so, you know, we're trying to clarify things like that. Oh, we cover things like fighting. We do wind up putting an item for harassment, intimidation, and bullying, but that's really captured in a separate policy.
Sure.
So, you know, insubordination, wandering, leaving class without permission, leaving the building without permission, you know, most of these relate. One other general thing I'd wind up saying is, and this is one thing I believe you, you told me about, Hamlet, was use of in-school suspensions versus out-of-school suspensions. You know, over the years, I think we've definitely had a transition more towards the in-school suspension model. One, you know, being able to, you know, have some better degree of supervision over the students, but two, you know, making sure they're being productive at the time that they're under suspension, you know? So, you know, that's one thing I think overall, we've, we've had more of a gravitation toward, and we, we wound up putting it in here. One thing we wound up also clarifying was smoking and vaping. We were a little bit inconsistent there, and what we did overall was make instances for that, you know, consistent at this point. Let's see.
Can I ask a question? Can you just clarify the difference between, and I'm just, I'm having a difficult time coming up with an example, and that's kind of what I'm asking for, the difference between inappropriate use of physical force and assault?
So inap, assault is you physically like attack someone and you tried, you were trying to hurt them.
Okay.
Inappropriate use is like your excessive horseplay. Like you were being very irresponsible in the way you were playing horseplay, and someone Like you were being very irresponsible in the way you were playing horseplay, and, and someone got hurt as a result of it.
Okay, fair.
You know, because you were, you know, being a little too rough.
But then there's also fighting. I guess that's when there's at least two parties.
Are engaged.
Engaged, yeah. Assault is just one person.
Yes.
Like, okay, got it, thank you.
I think one other thing I'll point out is we actually have one for spectator conduct violation.
Saw that.
You know, we wound up putting in there. That, that is one thing we actually had quite a, a bit of discussion about too, in terms of, you know, the district requirements in case a student is disruptive and unruly or potentially under the influence. It, it winds up being quite difficult just because that's after hours, yet, you know, for, you know, having a student tested at, at Capitol Health, right? We have to have, you know, a staff member present to make sure everything's going okay there. We've had instances where something like that happens, the parent's out of the area. So when you wind up doing that, you know, these are discussions we wound up having. I, I will say, you know, I give a lot of credit, Ms. Riley, Ms. Anne Freddie, in terms of providing very concrete examples of the rationale for a lot of the changes they're making here. They have a lot of experience and, you know, it, it shows because they, they can always come up with an example that illustrates the point of what they're making the recommendation.
And a lot of this was really reducing the amount of time that students are out of school. So, you know, we really, you know, we're trying to get away from that automatic, you know, you're out of school for two weeks and, and it just becomes, you know, it keeps escalating. Because we, we know that that's not the best thing for our students.
The, the one other thing, oh, oh, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. I was just going to say, the last point I would make is that for a number of items, we put in specific content related to use of restorative justice practices, you know, which again is something that's a little bit different than we used to do it. It used to just be penalties, right? So trying to add that in there. So, so those are, that gives you the flavor of the changes, right? So, so again, you know, Dr. Lillston made, had some specific questions related to, you know, specific penalties and, you know, one, one versus another, what, you know, should these be consistent, things like that? So we will absolutely take those back and discuss them in.
Yes, and there was also an ask, we did, we don't have language specific pre-K in here. That this, we don't suspend pre-K unless it's like the child's putting themselves or others in danger. That is a very rare situation, and we want specific language in this. So what I was proposing in an email that I want to share with everyone, that we bring, this, this was the collaboration you were talking about. We bring it maybe to SEL before we do our, our second reads, we can make these adjustments, and maybe there could be some suggestive language. Ms. Riley will bring data on the disproportionality of who ends up in our, in our discipline streams. We do track that, and we do have those numbers for you, so we can share that with the board and also have it shared out with everyone.
Do you mind if I provide just clarification on that?
Sure.
Sorry.
Jackie, do you want to go first?
Sorry.
No, it's okay, can you continue the conversation?
Sorry, just to, just to sort of clarify for the boards or where this is coming from, because I think you're referencing a conversation that we had over email. I think, you know, this policy is of great concern to me because I think it really has important potential impacts on our kids or our families. And I think, you know, we've been centering equity, we've been centering child well-being in our conversations, and I just want to make sure that we're also centering that in our discussion of this policy. I think many of you know here, like what the research says really clearly about school suspensions and exclusionary discipline policies is that they disproportionately impact students of color, and they disproportionately impact kids with disabilities. So kids with IEPs and kids with 504s. And I really think we need to think about that and take a deep look at this policy. So I did reach out to, to Mr. Swicki, I reached out to Dr. Trese, and I asked about some of the disproportionality data, and if we can look at that with regards to race and disability status, and what we're seeing in terms of suspension and other disciplinary actions. I think in addition to bringing it into SEL, I'm hoping that we can review the disciplinary procedures to make sure that they're trauma informed. Our kids are struggling, right? Like we all just experienced this pandemic, and, you know, these externalizing behaviors, these, like fighting, the defiance, right? I think we called in the policy, right? Like, a lot of that's related to that trauma. And I think we need to think about this in the context of what's happening as it relates to the fallout from the pandemic. I think the only other thing that I had brought up, which I'd really like us to consider, is I acknowledge and I'm grateful for the reduction in out-of-home, out-of-school suspension. It's still in there in places I didn't expect. We know that out-of-school suspensions are not effective in reducing misbehavior. We know that they have a cascading effect, as you mentioned, right? Like you get suspended, you feel more isolated from school, it causes social emotional challenges, maybe you get suspended again. And, and it also reduces academic achievement. And so I think particularly for some of these nonviolent offenses, so like profanity to staff, it's hard for me to understand why two days out-of-school suspension is the right course of action in response to that. So I know that's very specific, but like I just think we really need to take a deeper look at these offenses that do not put students, other students or students themselves in harm's way.
I know that's a valid point, I appreciate you saying that, because I, my next question to you was where besides that, where are there other places besides profanity to staff that you thought maybe out-of-school suspension was not an appropriate consequence?
So that's the one that stood out to me. I have to look at it again. There was another one that was threats to staff, where I don't remember if it was directly, yeah, so here we go, threats to staff. So that's another one that came out to me as thinking, well, it feels like there's a lot of bias in that. What do we mean by threats to staff? And I think that's an area where people can misinterpret things, right? So should that be an automatic out-of-school suspension? I mean, it's just a question. So I, I'm not, I'm not making a formal recommendation, but I do think we need a deep dive into this.
No, I agree with.
That's fair. Now, understanding that our discipline and our suspension records are very low. So when we say threat for staffs here in Hopewell, that means somebody grabbed some scissors and tried to stab you with it, or like something like serious happened. It's not, you know, you know, I'm going to get you later or something, right? So we, our suspension rates are not terribly high. We do have disproportionality who, who ends up in our discipline stream. The last run of the numbers, it was in a, the national trend, right? Kids with IEPs and special education students are overrepresented in, in students that get disciplined. And she's going to have these numbers for you. Boys end up in, in their disciplinary streams more than we would like. It doesn't, it's, it's not a specific ethnic group right now, but it is kids that are on free and reduced lunch, and that's been consistent, right? And these are also the kids that don't perform well academically for us. The same group of kids, right? So as we look at this, and this is data that we share with our teachers, this is specific work that when we do culturally responsive teaching, that is work around that specifically. That's what nurtured heart is, that's what resiliency training is, that's, we do work on your bias. We do all of that, and we still have it, right? So as we look at this, we're, we're open to all these conversations, and yes, we, we definitely need to have this conversation with multiple committees so that we get this right. And there is a point where we may have to exclude a kid from school. So I wanted to, because these are few folks that are enforcing student code of conduct in buildings, and you all are, as a district, and I've been in multiple districts, and I've been a vice principal and a principal here in, in Hopewell. You don't discipline kids as much as it happens in other districts. We bend over backwards before we actually send someone out. But there were some things that were automatic, like, you know, if you violated our drug and alcohol policy. The weapons policy is very, you know, some of these things are just, have been very tight for some time. But like you said, if it's something that's really not causing risk to the students around them and the staff, can, can we look at this and see what other things that may be more effective? But there are some times when they do need to be excluded from school. And even a timeout in a wellness room or a restorative room, or like say, you're going to be here while you reset, is still by the state coded as in-school suspension. So even if we don't send them out, and we put them in a room where they're getting all that touchy feely stuff, as far as the state is concerned, it's still IIs this. Like when you have to sit in there for one hour for two periods, you're excluding them for their, their instruction. So we need to name it what it is, but we can be more specific on what that looks like.
We've had this happen at the elementary.
Yes.
Could I make a comment too? I haven't, my computer's not working, so I don't get, I can't see the whole thing. But when looking at it, when I did look at it at home, I did, you, I had two, two proactive suggestions. One had to do with SEL, the other one had to do with self-determination theory. And I didn't see that the self-determination theory was made. But I think, I mean, in that theory, it talks about people essentially gaining intrinsic motivation, or what's called autonomous of, of action. And I think it's really important, all this stuff is, is that if we can get kids thinking about, you know, what's important to them and how they, you know, how they would control their own processes within the context of all this kind of behavior. It, it's really important for them to get, get into an autonomous mode in terms of, of understanding how they are, are interacting with this stuff. So I, I mean, I, on the second reading is, should I make a more determined?
No, no, you just, you, you just told us the feedback based upon the first reading, so.
Right. Okay. Well, so we're, we're going to have a second reading, we'll talk.
Jackie, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's all been good conversation. And my comments were similar to Pam's in that, like, some of the things about like cutting classes when there's assessment. You know, many times when students do that, it's because of an anxiety issue or, and I didn't see anything in here about how we support them as opposed to punish them. Because there's something going on in the social emotional when a child skips an assessment. And so how do we support them in that? The insubordination, we kind of touched on that a little. There were, there were two things that came into my mind with that. One was sort of that, that cultural difference, like what is insubordination to one child might not be insubordination to another child. It might just be that their communication skills are not at the level where they're trying to express themselves, but it sounds like it's insubordination. And many times that's also an underlying stress. I'm really emotional right now, I don't want to cry in class, so I'll get angry at you. I'll be insubordinate, you know, because I'd rather be the class clown than stupid or wuss or whatever it might be. So I, I, the definitions here kind of bothered me a little with no underlying, what's really happening with our children. And then the other thing that I didn't see here, and I don't think it falls into this, but I just wanted to state it out loud, like what if our kids do want to defy policy? What if there's a policy that they hate and they want to like defy it and like, you know?
Protest it?
Yeah, protest and do their civil duty.
Such as?
Where does that fall into here?
Would that fall into this?
Like, I'm, I'm going to skip class, I'm going to do a sit in the hallway.
That's a separate policy.
It's a separate policy. So that's not considered insubordination or anything.
It could be considered open defiance.
Right, it depends on, on how they proceed in that, right? If you are proceeding peacefully and you're doing kids demonstrate they walkouts and all that.
Yeah.
We support that.
Okay.
But if you decide to set stuff on fire and turn stuff over, right?
That would be a little different, yeah, okay.
There are three times you have to give consequences.
Yes.
Right? And you can do all the restorative stuff, and you can have the conversations, and you can mub on them and all of that, but there is a time when you've crossed the line and there has to be a consequence.
Yep.
And in spite of what may be the underlying thing, right? You can't punch the officer in the street, you're going to jail.
Yeah.
They might give you some touchy feely afterwards, but, so, but I do want to make sure we're getting it right. I don't want you to go to jail for something that's not.
Exactly.
Just to clarify.
I also kind of feel like some of like what you were talking about, about, you know, now I'm going to feel, I'm going to be angry instead of, I think we kind of have to lean in towards our, the, our teachers, our staff's ability to know and get to know our students, to know the different. I'm, I'm not saying everyone's like that, but I'm saying there are more times than not, I would like to think that they're going to be some, they're going to know them somewhere. Do you know what I'm saying? In terms, especially those that have IEPs or 504s, they're going to know what kinds of things could be triggers or things like that. So I, I like to give them a little bit, a little bit of kudos for, for, for that. I'm not saying everyone's perfect, but I'm, but I am saying that relationships are important in terms of educating students, and so with relationships comes knowledge of who they are. And hope, and hopefully that helps wean out some of the things that you're talking about.
And some other pieces that you've certainly added here, like for example, working with the behaviorists on, on behaviorism.
Yeah.
I think we need to add some more specifics in here on other opportunities to redirect.
And I, I think the, I think what you bring up is an important one too, because I think that's why I was recommending we look at the disciplinary procedures with Ms. Donardo and people from her team. Because I think what happens sometimes is that a student's going to an authority that's not the teacher they have a relationship with, maybe it's the principal, maybe it's somebody in the lunchroom. They don't understand that the student has a 504, that they have an IEP, there are certain ways that student acts, it may not be appropriate, but it's taken out of context.
Sure.
They're not, they're misinterpreting a behavior, they're not understanding developmentally what's going on, and that's missing from the conversation. So like who else needs to be in that conversation to provide that context? And I don't see that in here.
Good, that's a good point. And then I, my question to you.
Well, that wouldn't be in the policy.
Right.
Right? So when, when the student has an IEP and then they, they have specific behavior dysregulation concerns, all of that is addressed with anyone that that child would interact with. Now, will it be an opportunity where that will happen occasionally? Yes, but when they go in for discipline, that child and the vice principal and the principal already know that Rosetta needs to go to the CST people because she has behavior that we ignore, because we're working towards thinking that. We have a number of students that are, that have those level of, of behaviors that we have to address that way.
And is that limited to the, students with IEPs?
IEPs, 504s, the behaviors, why the 504s in place and iron, iron arrests.
So all of those legal?
And usually they're working with the behaviorists that would go in, and the consequences adjusted to meet the needs of that kid. Because you know, as, as you know, with a child with an IP, right? If, if there's, if we start suspending that child, then there's some steps that we need to take with bringing the parent in, working on that.
Rosetta, do, I know Paula's not here today, but at the beginning of the year, you know, when new stu, teachers are getting their rosters and stuff, and they're made aware of, are there, there are meetings or, you know, times where the information is passed on so that those kinds of things? To, to people who would be in contact? I'm not saying everyone in the world needs to know about this particular student, but those that come in contact with that student are now aware.
Yes.
This is, so then the code of conduct may not.
Apply to them.
Yeah, the, and, and not the code of conduct, but the disciplinary action or consequences.
This code of conduct might not apply depending on what.
Yes.
Violate, violation they have.
Correct.
There may be a kid that uses profanity with the staff member, but that's their ID.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So, you know, because they can't control that.
Yes.
So.
And this brings up a very good point, right? What I would say is, you know, we, we pick our administrators, we hire them, we train them, we rely on their judgment. Nothing here is set in stone for every circumstance. This is really intended to be a guideline to promote consistency, so we don't have one administrator imposing one, one penalty, another one for the same type of infraction, imposing a different one, right? That's what we're really trying to drive by having this. But in all circumstances, we rely on the knowledge, the judgment of our administrators to provide the correct learning, behavior correctional.
So it's not mandatory sentencing?
Correct.
Jackie, thank you.
Great discussion. So, so again, you know, if there are additional comments, questions, please continue to provide them for us. Obviously, you know, the policy committee, the administration will continue to discuss these, will go back to our administrators with the, with this feedback, and, you know, at the appropriate point, we'll bring it back for a second reading. So, so I, I guess, you know, we had the motion, so Bob, I just propose, you know, a voice vote.
Yeah.
To move to this.
We'll do a voice vote, and then these may or may not come back for second reading at the next meeting.
Correct.
Unless they're ready.
Unless they're ready.
Oh, good point, okay.
But they have been moved for first.
Adam, I was just looking at things one, and this is a, and it's a real, in the glossary, it says ECA is an extracurricular activity, and then it's defined as students are suspended, and blah, blah. That should probably be like.
In the glossary? That's like page three.
It's on page seven. It should probably be ECA suspension.
Yes.
Not ECA. An extracurricular activity is not a suspension.
Yes.
That's why I said it's not a.
I guess it just depends upon, it depends on everything.
All right. Thank you. So now we need a, now we need a voice vote, so, so all those in, oh, do you have?
This is just to move to the second, right? That's what we're voting on here?
Just the second moving any.
Okay.
We have to go back, we have to go back to the fourth.
All right, so all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, opposed, abstentions?
Yeah, just a comment there. It's just to move on so that, once we get to a second reading, if everyone concurs with it, then it would be approved in public. If people don't approve of it, you know, then we have another discussion.
Thank you. And what would happen is, when these are ready to go, Dr. Treese will put something in the green notes, and that'll be your chance.
To read them.
To read them, to go through them, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, and I guess then we, at some point, we would discuss how we're going to disseminate this information out to either the public, the students, or the parents, or whoever.
Well, we would like to try to get this stuff before the school year starts, because at the beginning of the year, each parent is given the code of conduct, and they must sign that they got that.
Perfect.
And then share that with, with the community. You'll see, and I know this came up, the random drugs testing is not here, that's a big policy. We felt like that that's a big enough policy, we need to discuss that as a board as a whole, and then have some community input on it.
That's great.
Because there's data on how effective that has been, and, um.
And the resources that it takes to.
Something that may not be working, so we need to have a big, deep discussion about that.
So, so I was going to ask, just procedurally, when you say discuss as a board as a whole, would that be part of a regular board meeting, or is that a special meeting just to focus on that?
I recommend it. We, when you did this process in the past, there were different meetings where you cut activity forms where we discussed it, or, and, and the board has discussed it, you know, it kind of got feedback before we went in and actually tried to make policy changes, or whatever you were doing with it. So I, you know, I think we definitely want to.
Okay, so it's a whole process?
Yes.
I, I, I'd like to make a comment that I'd like to see us actually move on that, because.
Agreed.
That policy has been in its current state for a while. Something about it.
Do we need to go again?
No, it's a pretty good.
All right, all right, great. So we're gonna move on to our July and August calendars. Let's see.
So what I, I have, I mean, obviously Personnel's gonna be the night of the board meeting at 6:15. SCL is already set for August 10th at 10:00 AM.
Does that still work? I'm not.
Not good.
I'm literally not available from the 9th to the 22nd.
Ouch. And the next board meeting is the 21st.
Yeah.
There is a chance that I will not be able to make that.
So.
Jackie, is it something you'd want them to, to report back to you on? Like, have the meeting, but report back to you on it?
Yeah, that's fine, because I'm not, I'm out of the country.
Okay, that's fine, I just, yeah.
So, oh, so what did, what did you say?
She's, she's okay with continuing on the 10th, she just won't be there.
Right.
So, you know, you'll fill her in, she's the chair, so we'll need to fill her in.
The 9th to the 22nd, you will be at home, you said?
I mean, I might be.
I get two now, possibly.
We'll make sure you get.
Nobody else.
I'll be at our display.
So just. What time, like, 2:00? 2:00 in the afternoon? 2? I'm kidding, I'm, I'm kidding. Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, that works, that works.
Fine.
Yes. Um, no, I think she. No, she's, she said make it when she can. I'm thinking, I think she said the week of the 13th, if there's something available. We usually do it around 5:00. We usually do it on a Wednesday or Thursday, but Alex, are you not here around?
I am here that week.
It's me and you.
We have our administrative retreat Tuesday and Wednesday, so by 5:00.
So what, oh, you have it on Thursday, too?
Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday.
5:00, okay then.
5:00.
And we can.
Yeah, any day that week except Friday at 5:00.
And then nobody wants to do it Friday at 5:00. We normally, well, we didn't have one this month, but we. We normally have it on, um, we kind of rotate it, but it, it usually is a.
Last one we had was on Monday at 6:00. Right after the finance.
Right, we try to get it as close to.
Yeah, that's probably better. 14th at 6:00, and if she has to change.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm, I'm available.
Are you saying we're gonna run longer than an hour?
So what time is your meeting? Oh, so we couldn't have ours at 5:00 anyway?
I was suggesting 6:00 on Monday. Does that now work?
I mean, it works, it's just.
But now Bob is saying we're gonna push it later, so I'm okay at 5:00 or after 5:00 that whole week.
Same, I am too, so I don't have a problem with doing it another day. I'd rather do it earlier than that.
So, so why don't we not do it after finance and facilities, so you can go, so, I mean.
So you guys can take the time you need if that's, whatever. We could do, I mean, you guys have your retreat, you said, but you're done at? But you're done? If that's normal school hours.
Well, I think she'll be done at 4:00, so you might wanna make it 5:30 here for time to get to it. Right?
Cause she doesn't, she likes.
I don't think there's any way around it, because that's when she's gonna be back. But, you know, or we can, you know, try to communicate with her in chat.
All right, can we put it on the calendar for the, maybe Tuesday, the 15th at 5:00?
Yes.
And then we'll make adjustments as necessary. Does that sound good?
Now, policy, I would like us to wait till after SCL meets, so that they can look at policies, and then we need to, any time after the.
The one thing I would say is, if the 11th morning actually was not working.
So what, October 13th?
Overall, that's good. Monday is good, Monday morning, if you wanna do morning, Monday morning's good. I can work Tuesday and Wednesday into it, so. That's right. So that week actually was pretty good. Or again, if you'd rather do it in the early afternoon, the administrators could probably do that.
You want, you want the administrators back at this as well?
I think we need to.
And when is our meeting?
23rd.
Yeah, just so you can, we have that AC in there on Monday in the morning, so I might have to. How early could we meet? On the 14th? I think it's 8:00.
Oh, absolutely.
Just move it down. Cause they do better in the morning. That sounds good. So if we do 8:00, 8 to 10?
Yeah, absolutely. Would that work for you?
Yeah, that's good.
Is that you?
It's me. Do we wanna do it from 9:00 before I leave? Oh, I'm out of town. But probably, yeah, I'm just trying to, that's what that. Could we do it after SCL? Could, I just won't be there. Oh, that's, that's your day out there. I mean, I, if we zoom, I don't have Wi-Fi on the plane.
I mean, it's a 15-hour flight, what the hell?
You won't be able to zoom.
You sure that I don't want you talking?
You will not be able to zoom, in most cases, they block any kind of video. Yeah. Yeah, you can, you can message me. I, I tried it, but.
Once again, I'm not like, you know, we have to doubt that importance. I'm trying to sleep here, ladies.
So, I just, I think I'm, I'm traveling, though, I'm in route, so I might as well just do it wherever I am, but I'm in route that day. We can, I mean, we can do something that we do then. Like, you know, we could just, you know, get one in before you go.
We, it would have to be Friday, the 4th, I'm actually out of town all next week.
Oh, then you're gone the whole time.
I mean, I'm only in Chicago, but like, my meeting literally goes from 6:00 in the morning until 7, 8:00 at night, every.
So do you wanna forego, I'm, I'm leading for our community relations for that month, but then I do need to share all, everybody's gonna get the data from the survey, but, and I'll report out for green notes and we can leave and get that.
Yeah, I think that's all right, because I don't think there's something critical going on besides the survey.
No, and I'll share that out.
Yeah, as long as we have that.
So we can get that to the public.
Great, are we good?
Yep.
Wait, what? Yes. Do we need a roll call? So we're foregoing the community relations meeting, is that what we're talking about? Okay, and now we need a, a voice, um, vote to, motion, we need a motion for a set of voices to accept the July, you know, August.
Motion.
Second. Perfect. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, the motion carries. All right, so moving on to items of new business.
I have an item of new business.
Great.
So at the June meeting, we had a request to give a report out for the climate action committee. So, oh, don't mind, I'll go ahead and talk about that a little.
Great.
So yes, um, the climate action committee has been meeting throughout the year. You may recall from last year, we established the committee. It is made up of administrators, of staff members, board members, students. And basically, it's, it's to start working to address a number of the items that were brought forward by students in terms of recommendations, in terms of what the district can be doing, both for greening, but then evolving into overall climate action. So throughout the year, we've been having meetings brought forward focused upon particular topics. So, um, like, February and March, we focused upon the educational aspects. What are we doing in terms of teaching about climate change, other environmental issues, things like that? Not just in science classes, but in, you know, literature, mathematics, things like that, you know, how we're addressing that. In April and May, we focused upon transportation. So we had a good introduction as to, you know, overall what's being done in terms of, uh, being climate conscious with our transportation meetings, you know, what's being done in terms of buses. You may recall, one thing we, as a board, approved was some of, uh, we were, uh, how, how can I describe it? There was a, uh, an item in terms of the state with regard to promoting the use of smaller buses for transportation, and it gives some flexibility for drivers in terms of getting a commercial license. One other thing it does is it brings an option in terms of greening out some of our transportation. So, you know, we're studying things like that. You know, I think it's a long time before large school buses migrate to that type of tran, uh, form of locomotion, but, you know, there are other things we can do in terms of encouraging carpooling, in terms of encouraging walking, bicycling, and things like that, right? So those are things we've been discussing. What we started talking about last month, and unfortunately, we missed this month because it conflicts with this meeting, is, uh, food and waste. So we've been talking about a number of things related to our food service options, and, you know, what we generate there. A couple of things I'll highlight from last month. One thing, you know, our first thing, bit of action we've been working on is conducting a waste audit, right? You know, it's good to know exactly where you stand. And there are companies, there are others, Americor, for example, was ob, one option we talked about, that will actually do that, Princeton actually did that recently. So, you know, we're, we were looking into that. One thing that stood out is efforts to eliminate, uh, waste through disposable utensils, things like that. We had a good discussion about, you know, what are the costs associated with dishwashing equipment for, you know, reusable dishes versus, you know, one, single use. You know, all kinds of things about, you know, could you encourage students to you bring their own utensils and reuse them? One thing we, that was noted, and, and this, this is a good thing for us to be talking about to our students going into the new year. It was noted that at the elementary and middle schools, students are very good in terms of, you know, when they're done with what they're using, separating them out, putting them in the recycling, appropriate containers, there's an educational component, but it works really well there. At the high school, it's much more of a challenge, because not all of our students eat in the cafeteria, right? Sometimes that's what club meetings occur, and everything isn't necessarily convenient for them set up to go ahead and do that. So, you know, we talked about what could we do to perhaps encourage that more at the high school. You know, and one other thing, a couple of other things we noted were, you know, potential, again, to eliminate plastic bottles, right? So we talked about things like compostable cups, uh, you know, discouraging the use of vending machines, things like that. Just one other item we have in there is that, you know, one component of that as well is like, uh, sourcing local food, right? Taking advantage of that, plus transportation, things like that. So those are some of the items we're talking about.
We did have a subcommittee on that yesterday.
Oh, okay, great.
Yesterday morning, so again, all those things that we talked about. Again, trying to level set some of the things, why we do certain things, um, you know, some of the things we're gonna do. We've got commitment from some of the food service folks that they're gonna help us try to reduce some of the plastic by not having a double wrap and that.
Yep, yep, that was one thing.
And the little cups and all that stuff.
And then look into other ways, I mean, we, they're gonna look into a, a biodegradable fork, but a lot of times those aren't, you know, they're, they don't work out, and the cost, you know, a lot of things are costly involved, and, and what the market will bear as far as if we bring, so we, we increased our lunch boxes about 10 years ago, but we, they keep going up, but we increased it when we went to a biodegradable tray, because the biodegradable tray is probably three or four times as much as the styrofoam tray that we use.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't use styrofoam anymore, anyway. Most schools are using paper, we're using a biodegradable, compost-based tray, because it's, it's the right thing to do, but there's opportunity cost of all this stuff. So if you wanna do this, you can, but it's gonna cost that to do it, so, you know, then.
Yeah, and you focus your resources, that's right, to what is most beneficial.
We always talk about different ways to promote meatless. We don't wanna go meatless because it's, you know, it's, different kids have different tastes at that age, and it's, they could be, but, you know, if we have a meatless option, you know, we're gonna promote a, you know, an extra this with that, or deserve, or credit, and, you know, something, you know, promotion, say, hey, if you do this on this day to help us reduce our carbon footprint, we'll give you that. The, the trash is, is difficult, especially at the high school, because in the gym, secondary place, we don't have the bins, the same. we don't have the bins, the same ability to put those big bins that we have in the main cap that separate the trash, because it's temporary, and you know where to move it and place it. So, it was a good discussion, and I think we'll continue, you know, going forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One thing I'd like this committee to talk about, if you have, yeah. We mentioned earlier, we're going to explore options to buy some significant capital. With any capital improvement today, there are options to go greener. Or not, and it usually, or this one's not right, there may be a larger upfront capital outlay for going greener, but doing it in a way where it pays for itself over lifestyle.
Absolutely, that was my rationale for buying my hybrids seven years ago.
And, so, I think, considering that we are going to be discussing capital improvement anyway, having some recommendations from the committee, but things to look at and think about. And again, I think we have to be extremely cost sensitive in all of those things, right? But, if there are costs, there are opportunities where you can pay a price and save later.
In addition to that, you know, beyond just that, one other thing we are looking at, the example for transportation was, what's the state doing about it? Now, they are focusing their resources, again, on where it's most beneficial, right? Yeah, so, yeah, so...
Right, and, 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 again, for those options, of course, right, we're going to be going probably to five or something, right? So, it's, it's a finance option. I've done that for my solar, where my solar pays more than pays for the increase in mortgage money. Right, so, those kinds of things, I would be very interested in seeing. We're going to be talking about how buildings build boiler systems, electric.
Adam, on the food waste thing, there's a group called Cafeteria Culture in New York, and they did like a zero-waste program in New York schools. So, you might want to look. So, they, it was 2015 that I met them, so they've been doing it a long while. So, you'll figure out whether it actually worked and was sustainable, but it might be a model.
New York City Public Schools?
Yeah, it was New York City Public Schools.
Damn, what a team.
Yeah.
That doesn't sound doable.
Adam, can I ask a quick follow-up question? We're supposed to be on this right next to you.
Adam.
You know, I'm not sure if this is under the jurisdiction of the committee, but I think we're all acutely aware of some of the weather-related crises we've had lately, related to climate change, the wildfires, the flash floods. And so, I'm curious if you can talk a little bit about, is the committee doing planning around these types of events? In terms of how do we make decision? For example, how do we make decisions around air quality? Whether students come into school, when, what they look like, what it looks like when they come into school? Are we thinking about what happens if there's more and more flash floods? You know, do we need to fortify the school against that? I'm just curious, like, is there planning happening around this? And is it happening? And if yes, is it happening in that committee or somewhere else?
Not so much that committee.
Okay.
Crisis management is something. We're always talking about this sort of thing, but, you know. We have talked about that.
No.
Okay.
We recently did, we recently did a major drainage thing over at the high school to prevent flooding because of the last storm we had two years ago in September, when our brand new gym was flooded out because of the surge. So, we, we, you know, when it's, you know, when we redo things, we tend to look at it. So, that was the time when we were, you know, we thought that we had some bad engineering, and we re-did that. So, hopefully, the next time, we won't get that kind of flooding rerouted or something else.
I'll say this, at least within finance, you know, for example, when we had the air quality issues due to the fires, like Tom Quinn reported to us how he was addressing that within the schools, right? So, you know, that might not be a bad thing when we do our, like, our annual, you know, review, you know, the facilities year, you know, maybe make that a component to share with the board.
Any additional questions or comments for Adam about the climate committee?
So, one other thing that we talked, we did talk about, you mentioned dishwashers. The trouble with dishwashers is the space. Elementary schools don't physically have any space to do dishwashers. You have to do major renovations to find dishes. We do have dishes at the high school. We talked about possibly reinstating trays maybe in the main cap, because if we try to get reusable silverware and trays at the auxiliary locations, you're going to have a tough time getting them back, because you've got to have somewhere to put them in carton.
I would definitely recommend looking at, where could we start, right? And start to be aware of it, and start investing, because the middle school did have trays and forks and dishwashers when I was there. There was no paper. It was all real silverware and real, you know, and we did all of that. And then it went away when the dishwasher died, and then it has to be... Right, but maybe that's an opportunity to bring it back.
So, what now, Carolyn McGrath is looking for grants to see about restoring, or see if there's money for dishwashers and things like that. So, we're going to start to work anyway.
The factor in the money from throwing out the silverware, that happens in your house, it happens in the cafeteria as well.
In the water.
Yeah, they just, they throw away.
It was funny, because one of the kids said, you can just go out and buy a dishwasher for you. You know, they're only got eight hundred bucks, I don't know.
Little guy.
Get yourself.
That's cute. Household dishwasher.
That's cute.
Gets off, the water temperature by law has to dry, has to get 180 degrees. So, she was, oh.
Dishwasher, we had someone that, and I like the idea. We have somebody who works their washing dishes as well. And that would be a great work study for maybe a student or somebody that needs a dish like that. So, we can look at that.
We can talk about that as well, maybe if you were going to be able to hire student workers and things like that, that they could take the trays home.
Yes.
We're always looking for jobs for students and have work-study experiences.
Yes, yes. All right. Thank you.
So, the last request would be if we could put that now as a regular item on the agenda.
Ah, okay. All right, any other items of new business?
I have one other new business item. Can you talk about the timing of the board's self-evaluation? Like, when that would occur in the life cycle of, like, the annual board cycle? If you have, if you're aware of it now.
In June, right?
It can happen in June, it can happen in June, whatever you want. Right. You make that decision, but with the term that they're having now, soon, how are they going to do? They wait till the end of the year, after the board was stated?
I mean, you could do it, you could do it now as this board, as it's coming to the end of its, like, term, evaluating itself.
Because you have that term up now.
It used to be done when boards changed over in April, it used to be done in spring, but now they change over in the winter. So, you know, this board can evaluate itself based upon the year concluding 2023. It's not, it's not the same requirements as superintendent's evaluation, it's actually...
And when you say year, are you saying calendar year or school year?
It used to be fiscal, we, boards used to run on a fiscal year. They don't anymore, they're on the calendar. So, you can do it, you can start it in the fall. So, the board doesn't sit and evaluates the way, how it runs, and that would be valuable.
Thank you. Thank you.
We should add that to talk to the president. Yes, she has to start that process.
Public comment is next? All right. So, the next thing on our agenda is public comment. So, members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assess us, will assist us with our record keeping.
And one more thing, I don't have a big clock, so yellow is a 30-second warning.
Perfect.
And red is red.
Stop, mean stop, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, but they're not going to be able to see my phone from there.
So, public session is now open?
My name is Lucas Wittenberg. I live at 327 Bird Street, Pennington, and I'm commenting on the policy commentary, specifically in regards to the policy 5530, substance abuse, and later 5538, random student drug testing and screening. To start, I'd like to ask for clarification from the Board of Education regarding the policy in terms of ISS and OSS for first offense of substance abuse on school grounds. Has that just been scaled back, but is that still a mandated punishment for people who use drugs for their first offense?
Yeah, we respond at the end, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. So, and assuming that that is, I would also like to ask the board why we are substantiating these policies that I would argue have a preponderance of evidence against them in terms of their inefficacy. In particular, systemic analyses of punitive policies for both random drug testing and punitive drug policies in schools have found that they increase substance abuse of drugs like marijuana, alcohol, and the incidences of violence, and decrease school trust in the community and school support. And I believe that if we were to completely abolish both random drug testing and punitive drug policy, and then reinvest those resources into harm reduction initiatives substantiated by scientific evidence like these studies, and then working with that in terms of, in coordination with our counselors, like the student assistant counselors, Dr. Veldman at the Central High School, and counselors throughout our school district, we would be able to build a much more comprehensive policy platform. So, my main points are, I just wanted to check whether ISS and OSS are still mandated for first offenses. I also wanted to voice my support for both Dr. Therese and the comments that were made about the inefficacy of out-of-school suspension in terms of continuing the discussion around random drug testing and punitive drug policy in our schools.
Thank you.
And you have, you can have a seat, I will make sure if there's more comments, we will ask you to answer at the end.
Thank you.
So, Kate Hamm in Pennington. I just wanted to thank you all for speaking publicly and openly and sharing your input during the first reading of policy 5600, the Code of Conduct. I heard comments about data showing those who are highly affected are boys, minorities, and students with IEPs and 504 plans. As the parent of a child who has been in the presence of behaviors listed in this policy, as well as someone who works in the field of education, I thought it was important to share a few things. Some of these behaviors may have existed prior to the pandemic and have only been magnified since. It might be worth exploring if appropriate placements and programs remain the same. I know that in my five short years here, I've seen programming exist in a building, having been extremely effective, only to disappear when the students in the program move on to the next building. Maybe the return of a program to address the needs of a few students struggling with the same behaviors is necessary. And though quite costly, maybe an out-of-district program better suits the students. I also heard the concern about the discipline associated with the specific infractions. Specifically, the main one I heard was the out-of-school suspension for a child using profanity with staff members. A lot of discussion was had about the staff member and the student, but I think it is also important to recognize, more often than not, that these infractions occur in the presence of other students who may feel threatened or that their safety and security is compromised. So, while I hear that there will be continued discussions surrounding the policy, I would ask that you take into account the impact which this behavior has on other students who are present and how you plan to support those students. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you for your comments. And as we dig into these policies and continue our work, there is a delicate balance between making sure that we're doing things that are effective, that are really trauma-informed, and that we're supporting students in their time of need, that we aren't being overly punitive. And it is against the law for you to have alcohol in the building, in a school building and on premises, to be imbibing in these things, whether you are underage or not, and then that's additional infraction of the law. So, as, so these are consequences for those offenses when you have an illegal substance. And we have to really think about it in that way versus, you know, the police really giving the schools the responsibility of kind of putting the consequence in place rather than a record starting downtown, because it's against the law. So, yes, we need to continue having these conversations. I don't know that we're going to be able to not say that no one will ever be suspended if they have marijuana in a school building, or if they have cigarettes or alcohol. Under the influence, we have to talk about, right? We have to work through these things and figure out, if somebody has a substance abuse problem, we know that the war on drugs and arresting everyone didn't work, right? So, we need to have these conversations around those things and the safety of all the other students, right? Because we've had incidents where, in our school, where someone's brought something in a building, and that's what brought the passive, the device to be able to test what that is, and gave it to someone else to drink that didn't know there was alcohol in there. And now, you have a student that's ingesting something. Or we decided to bake pot brownies and bring them in and give them out. So, those are, those are things that we cannot, you're not going to not go home for, right? Because you're using, and you're giving it to someone else unknowingly as something else completely. So, I, I don't think we'll ever be able to get rid of, there might be a consequence where you've gone too far and you might have to spend some time out of school. But we want to limit that, and we certainly don't want to create a cycle where we're suspending a kid who really doesn't want to be here in the first place, right? And they're out there doing the very thing we want to try to prevent. So, we still have some conversations to have. And we have to make sure that we, we don't set our principals and vice principals up for trying to manage over 1,000 students. And they, well, there's, there's no real consequence, you know? So, we have to be careful with that as well. So, it's a delicate balance, and we definitely value all of the work you've done. I mean, Lucas has shared a lot of information with this board, and we agree with a bunch of what you say, and we have this stance where sometimes there is a consequence, so we have to, we have to sort that out as well. So, we appreciate that.
If I could just make one comment, and I didn't say it before, but one thing that the policy committee and the administration took into account while we were looking through these, doing these reviews, was just the changing nature of the environment that we have right now in the state of New Jersey, right? You know, there are things that, you know, in terms of certain substances which are now legal that weren't several years ago, they are still illegal for students of age in the school. So, Ms. Riley, CJ and Freddie discussed how this changing environment is impacting what they're seeing in the school. So, again, we took that type of information into consideration on, you know.
And I also, I just want you to clarify, we talked a little bit before, but to Lucas's question, he wanted to know, are they mandated? And we didn't say that these consequences are mandated, correct? Is that what, or is, are we...
We do want consistency.
Yes.
So, I would recommend that even if we're coming up with a range, that we have consistency in this, because what you don't want is one person to get one consequence and another to get someone else something else. That's how we ended up with this two weeks around thing, right? Was we were like, we got to be consistent. So, if we create a range, then we need to make sure that the range that we create...
It's within the range.
Right.
Got it. All right, so I need a motion for us to go into executive session to discuss a legal matter?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, action... Again, action will not be taken. Any opposed? Abstained? Okay, we will go into executive session, thank you. Thank you. You were awesome. I know. It's so serious, like...
It's awesome. Yes. Policy was like, yeah, it's brilliant. I've tried to convince my high schooler and my middle schooler to come, and I like...
I can see how it's hard for them to do that.
It's kind of...
But, because it's like, it's like boring, boring, boring.
Boring, and then boring, 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 boring.
But I think it's really cool that they do this.
Very passionate about it.
Well, you gave a pretty detailed, a pretty detailed...
Oh.
Yeah, I was... Some were enjoying it. And he was here during class.
Yes, now we sit together, yeah, that's right.